The fire exits to your rear, these exits to my rear, take you into the building so that they're not fire exits. The two fire exits are to your rear. Um, let's see now, we also have, um, minutes from, uh. Okay, let's do roll call first. He's, he's right. Um. Uh, who's gonna do the roll call?
I'll give it a shot.
Okay.
All right, um, member Doig. Member Cloutier.
Yeah.
Uh, member Crowe.
Yeah.
Member Lockalade. Member Ionati. Member Ron Pelletier.
Yeah.
Member Ross Pelletier.
Yeah.
Okay, let the record reflect, do we have a full board in session? Uh. Do we have approval of the February fifth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting?
Second.
Made by Russ, uh, seconded by Keith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. Old business, there is no old business. New business, uh, I'm gonna have, uh, a plan written into the, uh, record. The applicant, uh, Michael Wisdom.
Yes, uh, the first order of business item five point one, owner applicant, Michael Wisdom. This is, uh, at fifty-seven, twenty-one Flat River Road. Applicant is seeking a dimensional variance to construct a thirty-six by forty-two by twenty-five foot garage in the front of the house, as well as in the side yard setback. The proposed garage will also be above the nineteen foot height maximum.
Okay. Uh. The applicant here. Will you step up to the podium? Please give your full name and address.
If you push that, that button to make it green.
Michael Wisdom, five, seven, two, one, Flat River Road. Nancy.
Thank you. Uh, I'm gonna ask you to raise your right hand. I swear you win. You swear, uh, you swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, in your own words, explain to me what you'd like to do.
It's just a storage garage for cars.
Just a storage garage?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, you're gonna be close to where your head because of once, uh, because of your sideline, I believe?
Yes, I spoke with the neighbor. She gave me, there's a letter of approval in there. She was fine with it approaching onto that offset on the left side. And then because I have a smaller lot, not a five acre, it brings it from the twenty-two height peak to the nineteen. I'm probably gonna be right around that twenty-two, twenty-three, but it was suggested just to go to the variance, just in case.
Okay, so you're gonna be how close to the property line?
I think it's about ten feet, the property line. Yep.
Okay, and he's required to be twenty feet?
Uh, he is required to be, um. No, it's, uh, it's twenty-five.
That left property line's a fifty foot right away that goes into, uh, the land up out in back of me. So it's not like a direct house or anything that's right there.
Repeat that again?
There's a right away that goes into Kim's property. He lives on Cost Trail, but for, for lot line, a lot, right up to one seventeen. It's like a little fifty foot right away that goes to that lot.
Correct.
Butts off against it.
Correct.
All right.
Is that? Yeah, exactly. Yeah. Yep, yep.
All right, uh. Anything else you'd like to add?
Just the layout leaves it, so I'm gonna add no more driveway, no more impervious pavement, none of that stuff, so it just, there's really no.
You're gonna be able to drive right around. You're still gonna have ten feet to drive around.
Around the, around the garage, yes. I, it, the, the way my driveway lays.
Behind it, you can't.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I think seventy feet off of the road, off of one seventeen. So off of the road, there's.
Right, what I'm saying is that you don't have to go on nobody else's dot ten feet. You pick a backhoe back there.
Yeah, I can get right around it, exactly. Yeah.
To get inside there for service.
You're not planning on taking the trees down in front of it?
No, no, I'll keep that up and there'll still be a bu- plenty of buffer. Yep, exactly.
Plenty of buffer. No one's gonna be able to see anything from.
No, exactly.
Other than just the driveway opening, but.
Yeah, yep, exactly.
The property pretty well. It's a bolt load ledge, base house, bolt load ledge on the right hand side.
Exactly.
And just, I mean, where he's putting it is probably the, the only spot that makes any sense that he can do, or he can.
Because as you go down, I put it on the print, as you go down into my backyard, that whole back corner is all mosh. It's all wet.
All right.
So.
Jim, could you just clarify the height? Cause I, I know he's got a fifteen, so he has a fifteen foot side, a side yard setback request. I didn't know if he said twenty-two feet or twenty feet.
So, so on a standard five acre lot, our, our way there is twenty-two feet, but when they made those lots, I'm under a five acre lot. So that restricts you down to nineteen feet. It's not a full.
The board is, what are you asking the board to give you? How tall is your building gonna be?
We put twenty-five on there, but, yeah, yep.
Is that what you're gonna do, twenty-five?
It's gonna be under that, but my contractor just suggested that.
Six feet of relief.
Maximum.
So, he, he needs a six foot variance for height?
Yeah.
Now, is it gonna be higher than the existing house?
No, no, not, not even close.
Okay.
There is. Directly across from that, correct.
You go in his driveway. Oh, you go, okay.
Yeah, I've got it. I've got a, uh, outdoor boiler that's right behind my garage and then a shed that's behind there.
You're gonna have three garages?
No, no, two garages. That shed that's actually behind there is, it's small. It's like a twelve by sixteen shed, so it's not a garage.
What's that shed used for?
My wife, her ex-wife was doing like, she's, she shed stuff or whatever you wanna call it in there. Something that kept her out of the house. I don't know what it was.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna ask you, unless anybody else has a, a question for the applicant, I'll ask them to take a seat.
Good.
And I'll see if anybody else has any questions on the application.
Thank you.
All right, is there anybody here that would like to speak on this application or have a question on it? Anybody have a question on the application or like to speak on the application? Nobody in the audience, I see? Okay. I'm gonna ask if there's anybody online that would like to speak on this application. No one online. Okay, I'm gonna go to the administration and how do you feel on this?
Um, the applicant provided a written narrative along with their application that, uh, you'll see in the staff report. Did provide, uh, evidence as it relates to the required findings. Uh, we do feel as though there's sufficient evidence to have positive findings. Ultimately, it's the board's judgment if you feel that, what, what you see in front of you, uh, it does meet those to the degree you think warrants an approval.
Okay. All right, uh. The board. Okay, all right. Motion has been made that we vote on this tonight. Uh, I'd like to have a vote on this motion. Uh, Lenny, how do you vote?
I, 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 oh, yes, positive, yep.
Positive to vote on this tonight. Keith? I also vote yes. Russ?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
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 Okay. Uh, at this time here, I'd like to have a individual vote on this. Uh, Lenny?
My, my recommendation is, is one of the members form a motion as you wish to decide about the project. And then after that motion, we'll take a second and then there can be a discussion and any vote on that motion.
Okay, do I have a motion on this?
So moved.
All right, and this is the, okay.
And, uh, to be clear, it's motion to approve, uh, referencing the staff memo as well as waiving the ratification. Great.
Motion. Okay.
Second.
Keith?
Go with Keith.
All right. Lenny, how do you vote?
Approve as presented.
Keith?
I approve as presented.
I also approve as presented.
Approve as presented.
Russell, I think, Eddie?
Approve.
Yeah, approve as presented.
Approve as presented.
Okay. Application is approved as presented. Okay. Uh, next application, please.
Will I read this out for you?
Yes.
All right. Owner applicant Lisa Moran, uh, with applicant Scott Thornburg, Greenworks LLC as the applicant. Uh, site address is seventy-four Wisteria Drive. Applicant is seeking dimensional variances to construct a twenty by thirty-two foot ADU accessory dwelling unit. The ADU will be thirteen point four five feet from the side property line where twenty is required and thirty-six point four feet from the rear property line where forty is required. Additionally, the ADU will increase the lot coverage percentage from thirty-five point four percent to thirty-eight point six percent where twenty percent is required.
Is the applicant here, please? All right, applicants here, please come up to the podium.
It's in the, uh. Actually in the agenda.
Uh, you're Lisa Moran?
Oh, you had pushed the button, so it's green, Tyler.
I'm Tyler Thornburg with Greenworks Property Maintenance. I'm the project manager, as well as the owner. Scott Thornburg right there.
Yeah, I need the applicant. I need you.
The name's on the paperwork. But you can both come up.
Yeah, you can both. But I need your full name and address.
Uh, my full name is Scott Thornburg, Scott Bradley Thornburg, and it's, uh, my address is Nine Ray Street.
Your name, sir?
My name is Tyler Thornburg. My address is two nine nine Hammett Road, Coventry, Rhode Island.
And you represent who?
Seventy-four Wisteria, Lisa Moran.
Oh, no, who, you, who?
Greenworks.
Greenworks Property Maintenance LLC.
All right, I'm gonna have you both raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
Yes.
Okay. Um, please explain to me what you'd like to do.
We're looking to build a twenty by thirty-two ADU for Lisa Moran and Kathy Matherne. This is for her elderly mother who is out there right now. That's Kathy Matherne. And she has a disability and her husband had just passed away, so we are looking to build an ADU for her to stay in.
Right now. The owner, Lisa Moran.
Yep.
Is she here?
She is not. You cannot make it.
Ooh.
Young child, single mom. That's why you're.
Well, I don't have the applicant. Don't I need the owner here?
I, I think, um, the applicant filed, you, you could act without the applicant. If you swear these gentlemen, they give you testimony.
I sworn them in, but I don't have.
It's listed.
Anything legal that says they're representing the owner.
But I think the owner signed the application. They are also signed as the applicant, according to the staff.
They signed as the applicant?
Yeah.
But they have, but they, they signed as the applicant, but they don't own the property which is coming in front of us.
That's true, Mr. Chairman, but I think the requirement is that the owner signs the application. It's not unusual for.
In the past, we've always had the owner had to be here or a le- or attorney representing.
I understand. I mean, if that's your, that's your policy, then, then.
That has been the policy from day one.
Swayed you, but, um, they were signed as an applicant and the owner signed the application. I, I know. Is that correct, Mr.?
Yes, um, the owner authorized this application through their signature. Uh, the applicant has also signed off, uh, so they are assigned party to this. Um, the certainly the board can at its own discretion take its policies on who should be here, but in my opinion, I think the applicant can represent the owner's interests present at the meeting if the owner cannot make it for family.
I had something in writing, I'd be okay.
That, well, I think you do have it in writing, you know, the, the, um, the parties here signed the application as the applicant. They're acting on behalf as representation and they've indicated that through signing the application forms, uh, the owner has also signed the application forms authorizing that, uh, these gentlemen, uh, are representing as the applicant on behalf of her property.
Mr. Chairman, may I just, uh, maybe suggest a compromise, just so that if the board wants to proceed, that if the board does hear this matter tonight, that you make it a stipulation that a letter of, of authorization from the owner be on the record. So it'll be subject to that. You said if you had something in writing, you would be satisfied.
I was just gonna suggest that.
You make it a stipulation that something from the owner has to be provided, that her parents were waived.
And that also that the owner is allowing these individuals to represent her.
Right. You could make that a stipulation so that you could go forward tonight and make a decision, assuming you wanted to, rather than having to continue with that now. Right, I would do that. Jim and I would make a motion that. See with this applicant at the time, but till anything moves concrete forward, that they produce a letter from the over, the owner, that you, you can speak on their behalf and, um, you represent them.
You want that notarized?
Yes. Okay. Motion's made and set, made by Russ, seconded by Ed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. Okay, I'm gonna let you continue on. We are gonna build a ADU, uh, accessory dwelling unit, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And who's gonna live in this?
Uh, Mrs. Matherne, and that is Lisa's mother.
Well, that's the owner's mother?
Yes, sir. Matherne?
Okay, uh. The problem we have here is. Okay, the setback is fifty, supposed to be fifty feet. What is it gonna be? Well, I'm getting here. Zoning, the state, no structure within the side setback of fifty feet and R R two. That's the staff report. You got two different staff reports?
I don't think so, I hope not.
Check the, um, check the title of that one, make sure.
I believe this is an R twenty zoning code.
All right, this is.
Oh, yeah, I see what, I see what Bob has pointed out. That's an errant, um, formatting issue. Uh, this, I'll verify. What you're seeing on page one underneath the title zoning, that's an errant copy paste error. Apologies for that. This applicant is in an R twenty zone. They need a, they have a twenty foot setback on the side, a forty foot on the rear. Um, and those, that one section under zoning is, is errant, but the other sections on the first page cover, uh, the relief they're requesting adequately.
Five, the twenty is required. Thirty-six point four, the forty is. It's fifty feet, now R, R two is incorrect.
That's correct.
Well, cause that's for R two, this is R twenty.
So that should be forty feet is required.
Yep.
For the rear.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record and for the benefit of the stenographer, I think, I just wanna clarify. We're talking about page one of the staff report, and we're talking the item called zoning. Is, are there errors on, are those two errors?
Yeah, the, uh, the error is there's a statement in the third paragraph of page one. It reads, "No structure shall be constructed within the side yard setback of fifty feet within the R R two zone." That is an errant statement. Uh, the rest of that page, which provides the details on the R twenty standards and what the applicant is seeking, is correct.
This is an R twenty and requi- and the setback required is forty feet.
Yep.
Yes, rear setback is forty, side setback is twenty.
So it's gonna be a twenty foot by thirty-two foot ADU. And it will be thirteen point forty-five feet from the side. Lot line, twenty is required, thirty-six point four from the rear, the forty is required. Well, it's not really asking a lot.
No.
The rear setback for the house as it sits right now is sitting at, I believe, the thirty-six point four zero as it sits right now. I believe to the existing structure.
Fits now?
Yes, um, as showed on the class one certified prints from Coventry survey, um, it, it shows us on there that the, it's the setback right now to the existing dwelling house is thirty-six point four zero. And that is going to be the closest that our addition gets to the rear setback. Correct. So I believe.
Oh, the addition's already up.
No, 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 no.
The dwelling that's there now is the house that's there.
I'm pointing to the map, I think what they're trying to suggest is that the existing structure is around, is at, is at that, at that location in the rear setback or actually close.
Yes, sir, and the deck is even built closer to the rear setback as it sits right now.
So if I'm right, the addition's gonna go towards the back, am I correct? Not to.
The addition is going to the left side of the house, which would be, if you're looking at the house to the left side, and we're keeping it at the same rare side distance it's at as it sits right now on the dwelling unit.
From the property line of the other, I went by there, so.
Correct.
It'll be, how much you said again? Twenty? Twenty feet.
So it's gonna be twenty feet in width and thirty-two feet in length. Off of the left side property, the setback is going to be, the closest setback is going to be thirteen and a half feet.
Cause I looked at, there's a boat over there now, so.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I've got a question. Is this considered an ADU? I thought ADUs were separate units.
No, it is considered an accessory dwelling unit and, um, they can be attached.
Oh, okay. It's just, well, free, okay. We never had one come across. Free, usually it was worded as more of an addition, but.
Yeah, that's where we ran into it.
Right.
That's where we ran into some issues.
Oh, the septic is in the back?
Yes, sir.
Are you gonna, you're gonna put a new septic in?
Yeah. So the septic was upgraded and I do have the prints and I believe they were uploaded to DEM's website.
Is it right or right behind the?
Uh, if you're at the house, it's.
Just pointed out?
Yes, sir.
You can't touch it.
Don't touch the screen, that's all.
Okay.
You have an ADU setup.
Once, we, we would be adding a bedroom, correct?
You'd have to add on to the septic.
I would have to confirm that.
Is there galleys there or just a regular?
What was that?
Is there galleys? Off the septic, a lot of times they'll have galleys off, like three galleys or four galleys, depending on the number of, of people there or rooms, or bedrooms, you know?
I'm not sure.
Or is it just a regular?
So, so what happened was when we, when we applied for this permit, I was told that the septic would obviously have to be inspected and if it is not a four bedroom right now, it'd have to be upgraded. So A-Carry site and septic went out there and he coordinated with DEM, they came out, they did an inspection on it. The septic walls were actually collapsing, so they upgraded the septic at that time. And I believe it was made to be suitable for this addition because we were planning ahead. So I do have all the septic prints and the blueprints for it and I'd be more than happy to either upload that to the portal and obviously we would have to confirm with the DEM prints. Cause I know there was a designer, I believe, uh, it was Rick Vaughn that designed the septic.
So you already got the prints and sort of the approval from DEM?
Correct.
You're gonna approve for four bedrooms?
I, I have the approval. I can bring it in and show you guys what it is. I'm not sure exactly. It was more of a design that they gave me and sent out via letter to the homeowner's house when the septic was upgraded.
That's more on the building department than us.
Yes, correct.
And we can, we can.
We can. Yep. A bathroom will be added. A full-size bathroom will be added. There's a laundry room with a half bathroom right next to where we will be attaching the addition to the house. Correct, and there is a garage. So on the rear half of the garage, there's a laundry room with a half bathroom.
So was DEM aware of the fact that you were adding the bathroom? And the kitchen, because usually it's just gate on the septic, some just gate on.
How we left it with the septic company was that they were gonna come out and do a, I believe, he said that the state DEM inspector would have to come out and do a final inspection once we had the blueprints and everything for this addition. And then once they had those blueprints and everything, they would be able to approve it at that point.
Tell you what you mean.
Correct. Correct. Whether that is upgrade the leach field, the tanks, whatever it is.
Alright, so you're gonna provide us with DEM approval?
Correct. Which I believe that would be required by the building department anyway.
Yeah.
That'll be a stipulation.
So Doug, that would be, this could be approved with that stipulation, am I correct?
That's correct.
I have some concerns. We have a staff, staff report here, and there's questions that need to be answered when you fill out your application. I'm assuming you fill this out?
Yes, sir.
So question number two says that the hardship is not a result of any prior action of the applicant. Provide the response to that. Just like the next question is, in granting this request variant, requested variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan upon which the ordinance is based. Again, we had no, you didn't have any required here that. And lastly, in granting the dimensional variance that the hardship suffered by the owner of the subject property is a dimensional variance is not granted amounts to more than a mere inconvenience. Meaning this relief sought is minimal to the reasonable enjoyment of the permitted use to which the property is proposed. The fact that it may be used for more profitable or that a structure may be more valuable after the relief is granted with no grounds for relief. Again, did you not understand the questions or you didn't see those questions?
To be honest, I did not see those questions. There was a, there was some confusion.
I'd like some answers to that, but.
I'll do my best. We did work extensively with this applicant in trying to provide them with guidance on what would be expected in front of the board. We provided them with an example of how a previous applicant has addressed those specific questions. We provided that to the applicant, to the owner, and to the future ADU occupant. We had numerous conversations with this applicant trying to assemble the correct level of information so that it was suitable in front of you. The staff went as far as to actually develop the mailed notice, the radius map, a few other additional steps that we tried to take to get them into this position. But unfortunately, we still do not have any information that the applicant has provided to the required findings of review for you to consider, consider this. So I had warned the applicant in writing that they should, if they haven't provided this in writing, they should come to the board prepared to present for those findings. So I think they have an opportunity to make oral arguments tonight to make their case against those findings that you just read. And we can see if there's sufficient evidence that can be developed on the record.
Do you have any, any, any comments to what he just said?
Do you have a copy actually of the questions that?
Alright, what we're gonna do is, I would suggest that the board take this under advisement. Continue this next month so that all these questions can be answered and presented. You have time to work with town planner, zoning department, and go through all this and answer all these questions. At the same time, submit that letter ship, let you guys testify and give, give all this information. Okay?
Okay.
You understand what we're asking for?
Understood.
Okay. The solicitor, how do you feel on this? Right. No, we're not denying it at all. We just want.
Do we gotta wait another month? I mean, if we get this information a little bit quicker.
We only, we only meet once a month, that's it. You should have had all this stuff done.
Their timetable for, or still have to go to DEM?
They gotta go, they gotta go to DEM, so they got, they got, you got quite a bit to do.
Not so sure that time would.
So when you say we have to go to a building inspection, the building permit was applied for, so what do you mean by that?
There's nothing built yet, is that correct?
No.
No, so you're gonna have to go to a building department, get a building permit, once we approve this.
We, correct, correct. We have to, but we need the variance before they can release any building paperwork.
Need all this information.
What do you think would be a reasonable time that you could produce some answers to the questions that you didn't have? Unless you have the answers right now.
I mean, I would.
Have to write it down.
I would do my best to have them to you by the end of the week.
The biggest hinge that I have that you have, and I'm not, I'm not doubting you, other than you're very vague in your, in your answer in regards to the septic.
Yep.
So that's the biggest thing, in my opinion, the biggest hurdle to get over is, does you know, does the existing system, is it big enough to accept another, another toilet, another person? And if not, obviously improvements need to be done to that. We need to see those things or be aware of that. We could stipulate the part of it, but to stipulate to three, you know, unanswered questions, I mean, if you'd like, I can ask him, I can ask you one at a time and you can verbally answer the question.
I mean, to be honest with you, I just wasn't prepared to answer the septic question as I thought that was gonna be more of a building department issue. And this is our first variance, so I mean, there was, there was some confusion along the process.
So, let's go to number one.
I do not, I just have the, sir.
No, he wants to know if that was given to him. You'd have to, no.
But isn't, isn't it, isn't the?
Yeah, so it's.
Verbal communication between this, and when I went into, I believe, the planning office, there was a lady named Carrie. And on the final time I went in there, I was given a packet that they have, which I believe you guys each have a packet, and it's the first page where they had typed on there, I believe manually with a computer, and had edited the packet to help out with the confusion throughout this variance process. I was not aware of any questions given at that point. I was told mail these out, and this is what you have to do. So I went, I sent them out by first-class mail, that was three hundred, almost four hundred dollars, and we sent everything out. And now I'm here with these questions that haven't been brought to my attention before, so that's why I'm kinda caught off guard and do not know how to answer them. I've never seen this piece of.
You don't have to re-mail out. We're gonna continue the meeting.
Yep.
You don't have to re-mail anything out. It's just this, we just need one thing, the representation of the owner.
He was talking, so we'll let, we'll let him finish. Go ahead.
We need a letter of representation, and we also need the answers, the findings and the facts. Need that, and. Four questions answered. Right.
The planner, the planner stays there, and he sends you, he sends you that information and also like.
So I received an example over email, I believe, by Mr. Doug McLean.
That's correct.
But I did not see this page attached with these resulted questions.
What you're looking at now is a staff report that's provided to the board that gives them guidance. It's a, it's a document intended for the board. It provides the same questions to the board that is in our code, that is in the example that I sent. What you're gonna see in that document is that it states that you had not provided a response to those questions. You'll see in numerous emails from me that I've encouraged you to be prepared to address the required findings of state law. And I've given you examples of them, trying to prepare you, this is the information that we'll need. There's numerous emails from me suggesting that you need to do that and to prepare. So my suggestion is, is to take those, take that advice seriously and to come to the next meeting prepared with the answers to these questions. These questions, the findings are in our code, they're in state law. And there's, they're in the example that I sent you.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sure if you're not comfortable.
You advertise you're not doing it. We're just gonna continue it to next month.
Okay.
If you're not comfortable, no, I don't think you are at this point. I don't think you're comfortable at this point, but if, like they're saying, if you go back and review that with the planner and get the answers, just come back here after that. Which makes sense.
Okay, I guess where I'm still a little bit confused is where would I have answered these questions to begin with? That way I know for next time, so.
Doug, would that be with Carrie or with?
The, the applicant can utilize the application form to provide the answers. The example that I gave him was basically a supplemental Word document. Someone just typed up a narrative, said, "Here's the questions, here's my response to those questions from my application." There, there's a variety of ways in which the applicant can provide information. The applicant has the right to provide their answers to those questions orally in front of the board.
Example, I'll help you a bit more over there. Question, you answered question number one. That the addition was built to create more living space to accommodate for your elderly, for the elderly mother to move in.
Yes, sir.
His mother's husband passed away and she had to sell the home. So that's, that's an answer. Number two, that the hardship is not a result of any prior action by the applicant. She didn't do anything to, to, to change any, in other words, it was, it wasn't, it's not really applicable at this answer. The point, I mean, at this point, it's legal.
I'm just asking our attorney, is this a legal?
I can't.
The board can be, try to be helpful, you just can't give them the answers. You can't, you can't answer it for them. You can make your own findings, but you still need to hear some evidence.
So the reason you're coming before us is because you need relief from the zoning ordinance.
Correct.
So that's what they call hardship.
Yep.
So that the hardship is not a result of anything done prior by the applicant.
Can I, you were, you were here for Mr. Wisdom's.
Yes, sir.
Before, obviously. Can we go over what he put in his application and maybe?
I don't see what you can.
Is that? Okay. Right, so the prior application, you saw his, you saw his scenario, he wanted to put a garage in the front yard. Very similar setup, he had setback issues. For question number two, his hardship was where the septic was and where ledge was, so he couldn't put it in any other part of the yard. Had to go, that was basically the only spot in the yard that it would have to go.
Correct, and.
That was his situation.
So, I mean, we're in the same situation as far as that goes. I mean, you have a septic on the right side of the house where the deck is, and then you have a in-ground swimming pool with pool house in the back that has the pump, it's more of like a utility pool house. And then in the front side of the house, you would not be able to build in the front yard on any of the right side of the property due to setback reasons. And then the only spot that would be suitable for this ADU to be built would be the left side of the existing dwelling structure.
Okay, that's good.
I appreciate the clarification.
Number three.
Thank you.
For the prior applicant. Second. That grant, I'm sorry, that granting, granting of the request variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan upon which the audience, excuse me, the ordinance is based. The prior applicant said, "My driveway travels straight to the house and loops left around an island connecting back to a single car driveway." The new garage will be directly across from the existing garage on the side of the island. This loop in the existing driveway allows for perfect access to the new garage without needing to add any non-permeable surface for access. So in other words, it's it's not changing the layout of the, of the property, it.
Correct, once this addition is.
Would that apply for you guys?
Right, so once this ADU is attached to the existing structure, what will happen is you'll have a existing two-car garage that Mrs. Matherne will be able to access from her dwelling unit, and she will have her own front door. That way she will be able to access the property on the front side along with the garage. So her and Lisa will both have shared access to the existing garage.
Right now, how does this not alter the general character of the surrounding structures?
Yeah, so there's houses around the whole neighborhood that have existing, you know, additions that have been put on the house. And one thing with this addition is it will be tied into the existing house, so there won't look like there is any changes to the property. The only thing is we will be exceeding the side setback limits and rear.
Okay, okay. Want me to go with question?
Correct, so there was some, there, there was some discussion with the building department that there may have to change, be a change in the plans because of where the front door placement is. So with it being an ADU, we may have to eliminate the front door and have only access through the garage. Yes, so I believe that was a change that we did plan on making once we finalized everything. Correct, but I don't think that would be acceptable in that zoning code, if I'm correct, right?
Rental unit?
Yes.
Well, if you're in the league, that's correct. Some people don't do that.
Yep.
People that live in there, doing everything above board, but if you were to sell the house.
Yep.
It's entirely possible that somebody, they might sell it as a house with an in-law and more, and a partner, I mean.
I mean, I think if.
They stay above that.
How many electric units, how many electric meters will?
It will only be one electric meter and all the plumbing will be tied in, obviously, through the existing structure. So there won't be two water mains, there won't be two electrical meters, it'll be there is going to be a ductless mini-split system put in for this side of the addition for cost reasons, for heat and AC, obviously.
So do you want me to go with question four now?
Yes.
Making good progress.
Yep.
Granting a dimensional variance that the hardship suffered by the owner of the subject property, if the dimensional variance is not granted, amounts to more than a mere inconvenience, meaning the relief sought is minimal to a reasonable enjoyment of the permitted use to which the property is proposed to be devoted. The fact that a use may be more profitable or that the structure may be more valuable after relief is not granted, no, is, no. After the relief is granted, is not grounds for relief. In other words, we can't do this just to make the house worth more. It has to have another reason.
I mean, the purpose, uh-huh.
Oh, I'm sorry, the prior applicant said the applicant provided the following statement regarding above hardship standard, I have received permission from their budding neighbor and have attached a letter with his signature. So she had a neighbor, he had a neighbor that abuts, the directly budding neighbor was fine with it. That's what he.
The main reason for this addition is for her elderly mother Kathy, who has disabilities, and her husband has passed away. And obviously, this is gonna be more affordable living.
I believe, Doug, are you happy with these? I believe, Doug, are you happy with these findings effect?
I think we're heading in the right direction here, and I appreciate the board's patience to offer feedback so that we can attempt to close the matter tonight, or if the board sees fit. I didn't, I didn't hear, maybe I missed it, Ross, did you do not prior action? Because I think it's worth getting a response on that. And in my opinion, just to jump to it, many of the arguments that are being articulated here tonight are that the, the subject property has constraints to where this can be cited. We're talking about a pool, a septic, the house sits in a certain spot on the lot, the driveway's in a certain spot. Is it the prior action of this applicant, the, the design and the layout of this lot the way it is? Or is it fair to say that that was not their prior action? And they're working the best they can with the layout of the house and everything around it as is?
This was definitely not planned for, as this is an unexpected situation over the last couple of months that has happened. This is just unfortunately the only way to construct this unit without interfering with anything else. I believe the pool has been there since the house was built originally.
Is it fair to say that the, the layout of the lot and the fact that this is the best place is not the prior action of the applicant?
Yes, I think that's safe to say.
I'll take it.
Yeah.
That's.
Yeah, correct.
She didn't cause any.
No.
Okay, my other question is, brings it up, now, this is Wood Estates, correct?
Yes, sir.
Now, to hit this with the attorney, I know what all this just changed in state laws. Now, at one time, I know Wood Estates had a, what do you call, the land individual bought it. They had to stay within the, where footage and they weren't allowed to do anything greater, but I think that's all been overruled.
Oh, they had a deed restriction on the property?
Years ago.
That would, you know, then the only thing I can say with that is that we wouldn't know that unless somebody did a title search. You're part of a homeowners association there?
Yes.
Yes, I believe they are part of an HOA. As you drive around Wood Estates, I'm not sure if I could use this as an example, but there are additions that have been put up. For example, there is one on the main road coming in off of Route 3 where Cumberland Farms is that was just being built.
Let me just stop the gentleman there. This board has no ability to override homeowners association. They, they, they would, if anything, would put a stipulation that say that they'll grant this relief provided you're not violating the homeowners association. If you have a deed restriction with the homeowners association, you'd have to get them to release that. They have no authority to do that.
You'd have to do a title search for that?
Well, you said you know you're in a homeowners association, they have a, they have a list of requirements.
You know the members of the homeowners association, is your way?
Well, they still have it because they have, uh, odd sales and everything.
Again, I'm not trying, let me just, let me just be clear, I'm not trying to complicate matters. I'm trying to say that board has no jurisdiction to override the homeowners association. They cannot leave here thinking that if they have a restriction with the homeowners association that this somehow allows you to build.
Right, so if they.
I'm not 100% positive that there is a homeowners association, I just believe that there was because of.
What I would suggest to the board, what I would say, I would say is, the board should not.
Take that into.
Involve in that, but they should be cautioned that if there's any deed restriction or homeowners association, that this board has no jurisdiction to override that and that board or that group can stop you from building this. I'm just, you know, I don't want to weigh into that, it's really not.
Oh, you're correct.
The homeowners association has the responsibility to say yes and no, in a sense, but to go to the homeowners association.
The homeowners association, well, look at their title, and if there's a deed restriction on your title, you have to get relief from that deed restriction from whoever's in control of that. So that's going to, that's a private contract, if it doesn't exist, it doesn't exist. I would just tell the board, other than cautioning them that you have no authority to override that.
Correct.
In other words, if they were to.
Understood.
To stop you, you couldn't say the zoning board allowed us to do this. And worse, the worst we can stipulate, as long as the deed, there still is a homeowner. You could do that, I just, I just, the bottom line is, what about if there isn't one? How far do you want that stipulation to go? The story's getting bigger and bigger.
Right.
Way in the weeds. I get it, that's why I'm saying, I don't know how big you want, I'm concerned about a stipulation proving a negative, right? They have to get you proof that they're compliant with a homeowners association that may not exist, and if it doesn't exist, you don't need it. I, I don't, that kind of stipulation.
I think the key is, is there a homeowners associate, an HOA? Yes or no?
But that's not on us to figure out.
That's not us to figure out.
That's.
Just needs to caution the applicant.
We do, that's what we do, just caution.
If there is a easement, if there is a deed restriction or a homeowners association, the board's approval is not override your responsibility, that's a private agreement.
Understood.
I think it's just a cautionary note. If you want to make it, the board noted, not stipulated, that if there is a private association requirement or a deed restriction, the applicant must comply with that privately. But we're not making the stipulation because you can't approve it or reject it.
All right.
That make sense?
That's, does, it does. Okay. All right, I'm going to have you, since we've gone through all four findings and facts, that the. Doug wanted. Have you take a seat, and I'm going to see if there's anybody like to speak on this application, or against. Thank you. Or is anybody here that would like to speak on this application? Just have a question on the application, or be for it, against it, or just a question? Yes, ma'am, please come up. I'm just going to ask you to give your full name and address.
Carol. Okay, Carol E. Banford, 33 Wood Cove Drive. I'm next door to the property, and yes, Wood Estates does have a residence agreement, like where you have different cert.
There you went, raise your right hand.
Oh.
You want me to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth for this board?
Yes, I do. Okay, um, I know that that used to be Dr. Downing's house years ago when we bought the lot next, that he had next to the lot that these people are going to do the addition on. But my question is, is this an addition or is it actually an ADU? I mean, it sounds to me like it's an addition. What's the difference?
It could be an addition ADU, but this is what gives them, by calling, by titling it as an ADU, and Doug will correct me on this, they're allowed to put a bathroom, a kitchen, and another bedroom in there.
I see.
How it's constructed, I believe the rules have all changed. That is up to the individual to get an approval from the building, am I correct?
That's correct, this is considered an accessory dwelling unit, which means that it is an independent unit that exists. It will have its own self-sufficient kitchen. It will be a self-sufficient unit for all intents and purposes, but it is attached to the existing house, just as you see on the map over there and its location. It will be attached to the garage side of the house.
Yes, so it would be a little bit safer to say that it would be a family member living in it at all times or someone they knew, because my concern is down the road, what happens if every.
Right on that, I don't believe that we can make this a family member living there.
The, we will defer to the state law on this matter. The state law dictates the terms of who's allowed to occupy that. The applicant is purporting that at this moment in time, it will be occupied by a family member. But in the future, the state law dictates the terms, and state law is more permissible on that than just a straight family member arrangement. That's just for the board's edification.
Thank you.
Okay, that's what I want to know, thank you.
Carol?
Sure.
Association.
It is, we do have a homeowners association years ago, because I used to live on Circlewood, and I know when we built, we had to follow certain rules. And I know when Dr. Downing put that pool in, they had to go before the board to get special permission because of where it is.
Still a board?
Is there still a board that? I'm not sure of. Okay, thank you. We, and we pay Wood Estates, Wood Estates Resident Association dues, but it's up to you if you want to be a member or not of the association.
That's basically just for the point in the boat ramp.
In maintenance, right, of the, exactly.
It's a volunteer thing.
Right, but we did have a set of rules we had to follow back in, like, 79, 80, that you were supposed to follow in order to live in Wood Estates, but if anybody follows them, I'm not sure.
You don't have like a monthly bill that you have, like $200 or $300?
No, no, we don't.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
Just to identify which side of the lot.
Okay, which side of the lot are you in?
Well, I'm a little confused.
I think you're on the top.
That'd be to.
Yeah, but you're above, yeah.
For record, this, this unit would be no closer to that person's house than the existing structure.
Correct.
Well, this would be on your side.
Well, yes, but you know, I have trees, I'm not going to really, you know, see that much of it.
We're confused on if the addition is going to be closer to you or not.
It will be closer to me on my side, yeah.
No.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, their backyard is like this, and my yard is right here, against the whole backyard.
We'll be going toward.
Side of the house.
Right, but it'd be closer to her than anybody else.
Well, it'd be closer to Gold, Gold Schmidt?
Whoever's on the other side of me.
Right next to that is the house on the left.
Yeah.
Gold Schmidt is the neighbor.
Right.
I really don't have a problem with this as long as it's her mom living there. But my question is, in general, if this stops popping up everywhere, what's going to happen down the road? I mean, because I do have tenants, I do have, I am a landlady, and I know how ugly things can get, so I'm just trying to warn you. What?
But the problem is, this is all new, done by state legislature.
Yeah.
Being told to, I don't think we have the knowledge of, well, right now, yeah, they, I, Doug will tell you, it's, it's, it's open completely to state regulation.
The reason why this applicant is in front of us is because they are looking to build in the setbacks. That's why they need relief. They would not need relief if there was a different arrangement between the occupant and the, the occupant of the ADU and its relationship to those that live in the house. That is dictated by state law, but that should be a known component of this, is they are developing an accessory dwelling unit, it's a separate independent unit, it is attached to the house. It need not always be occupied by the mother-in-law, that can change over time, but they're here because of the location of the unit, not because of the arrangement between the family.
But I was just wondering, because, you know, I know this is all new, this housing, that you can put small structures on your land now, so I didn't know how that was going to work.
Okay.
Just for the, just want to add one more point to follow up on, on the planner. Board could not deny it for the reason you're, of your concern. That would be an improper reason to deny.
I wasn't really wanting them to deny it, they were.
You didn't know.
Yeah.
That would be an.
Right, I understand. But I was concerned too about the septic, how would that work, you know?
Septic would have to be approved by the state, nothing to do with us again.
Right.
Other than we'd like to see the paperwork of the, of the septic improvement proved, am I correct?
That it can support another, you're right, mm-hmm, okay.
It will be a part of the building permit review, a required town review after this board is done with its decision, that the septic will need to demonstrate that it has sufficient capacity to handle the, all of the rooms in the house, including the new ADU. So the, the board need not worry that that documentation is in front of you. You can rest assured it will be in front of the decision makers before the, the C of O is given.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak on this application, for or against, or just have a question on? All right, I'm going to go online and see if you got anybody. Nobody online? Okay. I suggest that I have a motion on the floor that we continue this.
Actually, you never go. But you asked.
No. No, we need to vote on it, we need a motion made, though. Okay, so. Subject to approval of a letter of acceptance by the, how do you put it? The owner, and also approval of.
Septic system.
And I thought there was one more, I thought there was.
HOA if it exists.
HOA.
Well.
Caution.
Caution, just a caution. Not a stipulation. There was only two stipulations and one caution. Okay, Ross, you're going to make this motion?
Okay. Okay, and then move on.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we vote on this this evening.
Second.
Second or not?
Second.
Second and by Ross? Okay. All owners of the town, if you want to vote on this tonight, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, at this time here, I'd like to have a vote on this application with stipulation of representation from the owner, am I correct?
Yeah.
Also, a letter of septic approval.
Correct.
And also.
Caution.
Caution them that there, if there is an HOA, you'll need to deal with that situation. It doesn't have anything to do with us.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just one more thing, Russ, are you happy with those answers that you got?
Yeah, I would recommend in this case, you can waive ratification, which wasn't noted in the memo. I would note in this case, the, the staff report does not contain any findings, so you may want to reflect that this decision is based on the discussion and the findings that happened here through testimony tonight.
Okay, so the findings of tonight, all right, so.
I'm.
Who's going to make this motion?
I make a motion we approve this based on the findings from our discussion tonight, since it wasn't in the staff report, and with the stipulation of, excuse me.
Yeah.
Finding the information in the staff report and. And the discussion we had in the meeting with the stipulation of a letter of representation from the applicant, I'm sorry, from the owner, and noting that there is possibly a homeowners association and stipulation of the septic is suitable for four bedrooms.
Second that.
Okay. Seconded by Bob?
Ed.
Ed.
Oh, Ed. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm going to ask, Melissa, are you okay with this? Doug, did you want to add anything to this?
Nope, I'm satisfied.
This time here, I'm going to do a roll call vote, Lenny, how do you vote on this?
Approve with all the stipulations and everything else that goes with it.
As the, as the motion was presented.
As the motion was presented.
Keith?
I approve what the stipulations represented.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I forgot to mention waiving ratifications, do I have to redo it all?
Okay, we can do that afterward.
Okay.
Yeah, let's finish this motion. All right. I also approve with the motions. Yeah, let's finish this motion. All right. I also approve with the motions that were put in and the caution. Homeowners association. Russ, how do you vote?
I also approve the motion as presented with the stipulations and caution.
Okay.
I also approve stipulation and the caution.
I approve the stipulations and the caution.
Approve with the stipulations and caution.
Application's approved as, as the motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we waive the ratification process.
Second it.
Okay, motion's been made, and second it. All those approved say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have. Okay. Next application.
That's it.
Good, huh? Okay, I do want to make a motion. I'll be stepping down after the April meeting. That went there, the town council will have time to, I believe, take the alternates, move one up into the seat and put new alternates in, because isn't that May, the time you do the?
I'm, I'm sorry, can you restate it? You're suggesting there's a timeframe in which alternates are transitioning?
I'm stepping down after May, I mean, after April. April is my last meeting.
It's been a long time, Bob.
Forty-seven years.
Forty-seven years as, as, as on this board? That's a long time.
But you're only 52.
Chairman.
You're only 52.
I'm only 52.
So I got to ask a question. Since he's stepping in, that spot's going to be, well, everybody's forced to move up.
Get everybody.
That's a fair question. Let me get a sense of this. I believe what happens is the town council appoints, and when they appoint, they appoint to a position, and that position has a term. There are two alternates, if memory serves, it's Ron and Lenny. I don't believe there's an automatic elevation. I believe that, it could be that the alternates have a discussion and then an alternate can apply for a regular, full-seated position, and then, an alternate would then become available and vacated. I don't believe there's an, I, I think that the town council would have it that you have to apply for the regular position.
Right, but I mean, if they're going to apply as another alternate, that gives them the opportunity now to apply for a full-time seat.
Yeah.
Since they know well in advance.
Yeah.
I'm trying to do.
Yeah, I, I suggest some sort of contest or battle between Ron and Lenny be established as part of the agenda for next month.
Those way.
Uh, no, I think that, but I, I would suggest that, keep in mind that the, the process is that the town council would solicit that there's an open, regular seated position, and that any interested member can apply. However, if asked my opinion, I think that the members that have experience on this board as alternates would be great candidates to fill that regular seated position. Ultimately, that is a decision by the town council. If a, if, if an alternate elevated through the town council process, then there would be an opening for an alternate, and there'd still be an opening for an additional person on the board.
That's correct. You know, so, I mean, but this way here now, the council also knows in advance that they got to put somebody in, and plus also, I'd like the members to realize that we do have good people here, and you're going to have to elect a chairman.
Yeah.
Vice chairman.
If I'm appointed, yes.
Okay.
Who's going to be the chairman? I, I think I can do both jobs.
Definitely not.
Thank you for that. Chairman Crowe, thank you for your service, and, you know, perhaps, it's good to know that that's coming. Perhaps in April, we can arrange for, for some, some, you know, acknowledgement of your years of service. Forty-seven years on a board is, is a long time. And it is helpful for us to get ahead of that with the council. If, if there's, this is a board that it's good to have the full complement of members and not have a long delay in between that in case members are missing. So I'll indicate that to the clerks, your intention. Is that the end of your normal term?
Uh.
Either way.
Yeah, it might not be this year, but it's, it's usually.
Either, either way, I might just, I think it would be helpful for us to begin the paperwork process. You could write me an email, Bob, just to suggest my last meeting will be April, and then.
Also send one to the council.
Yeah, yeah, and that, and that will, I'll work with the clerks, make sure she's putting the open position available. We'll understand that that position would not be filled until the May meeting, but I would encourage, if there's an alternate here that wishes to become a regular seated member, to explore that.
That's what I like to see.
Just an FYI, if you contact the town clerk, she'll know when your terms are. So she's, she's got a file for that. It, it's quick and fast, and you don't really have to. Yep.
And I want to make sure this listener's okay with everything.
Wait.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, motion's made by Keith, seconded by Russ. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
But, one seat's going to come up as a vice chair, and.